Bring all this meeting to order. Please, in location, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Reverend Dr. Bill Fisacherli, First United Methodist Church of Bonita Springs. Let's bow together. Lord, we live in a world that loves division. What favorite car we drive, what our favorite sports team is, what our favorite color is. Lord, those kinds of divisions, they're fun and they're not harmful, but there's so many other divisions that you warn against. Divisions against people's thoughts, divisions in our government and our nations. Lord, you specifically warn against party spirit. I pray for this group today and for all of us that we would leave behind our ideas of what we want and listen to the people. Lord, help us to listen and love each other the way you call us to love each other. Forgive us for thinking that only we know what's right. Help us to do what is best for all involved, for the, for those who are powerful and for those who have no power. Guide this group. May your Holy Spirit be in this place. Guide us and lead us that we would honor you and honor this country. Through your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance on three, one, two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Okay, county, city clerk, please welcome.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Councilmember Pardon.
Walking in the door.
Okay, folks, the mayor's welcome. I'm so glad to see you're all here. It's we the people, you and I and everybody in this country. It's we the people who are the government. And don't forget that. Don't let the government run over top of you. I'm part of the government. I was elected by the people, not by the government. So we, we need your input as far as, I am not a know-all, know-all. We have six other people up here that represent districts in the city and we don't know everything. We need your input, so please join us with the public comment period.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Kyle Moran. I first moved to Bonita Springs over 30 years ago and I spend nearly every day in our downtown. And I'm down there because like a lot of folks in this room and in our community, I've dreamt a dream. I've dreamt a simple dream that Bonita Springs in our downtown will no longer just be a throughway from Fort Myers to Naples, but a special gathering place for our community. And it wasn't that long ago that that dream seemed very far-fetched. Our downtown was just rundown, but this city and under your leadership and previous city councils, we've done a tremendous amount of work. In fact, I came across this white paper that was done in 2017 at the direction of city council. They had staff write 50 pages on everything that had been done up until that point. They went into the eighties and the nineties and in the anti-marian period and they talked about all the consultants and all the meetings and all the money we had spent to try to build a better downtown. And that work continued after this. We've hired more consultants. We've had more meetings, yet practical steps still remain undone. And it's not because the dream has died. I think the dream burns stronger today than it ever has before. Mr. Mayor, you have dreamt this dream since the restaurant that your family owned on 41 before it was relocated was abandoned by that relocation nearly 50 years ago. Jamie, having grown up in this community and raised a family here, you have dreamt a dream that downtown will no longer just be a blight on the community, but a positive gathering spot, a positive for our community. Councilman Pardon, you have put today on the agenda an item to revitalize our town square. Thank you for doing that. You've been a consistent advocate for downtown. You have clearly dreamt the dream, as has Councilwoman Carr. Councilwoman Carr was a tireless advocate in her first term. She made downtown revitalization a key part of her successful reelection campaign. Thank you for a continued champion of downtown. Councilman Corey, before Councilman Pardon put an item on the agenda, he put an item on the agenda to redo the east half of this same parcel, our town square, and that has proceeded successfully. Thank you for doing that. It's another sign that you too have dreamt the dream and been a consistent champion for downtown. Councilman Folic, in your 20 years of being a private business person in this community, you have consistently championed downtown as head of art and public places. You have helped that downtown and now downtown is in your district as an elected representative. You made a key part of what you're doing to help our community. And, and Mr. Forbes, in your diverse experience in land planning and architecture and engineering professionally and politically, you understand intimately the power that downtown revitalization can have for a community. You've been a consistent advocate. You too have dreamt the dream. The progress not being made because the dream isn't being dreamt, it's because we haven't taken practical steps. We haven't taken practical steps as simple as recognizing the fact that we will never have a great downtown when our town square is in disrepair. It's that simple. We will never have a great downtown when our town square is in disrepair. And thankfully, we've hired all the consultants and we've had all the meetings, right? And we've been left with a very clear recommendation by DPZ, who is a world-class specialist in revitalizing downtown. And they have given us a great option to move forward and take that town square out of disrepair. So when the motion is made to approve DPZ Option One, please say yes. Please say yes and take a practical step forward to realizing this great dream that our community has had for so long. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Hi.
Good morning, City Council. My name is David Alpert. I live, work, and volunteer in the downtown district. Spent a lot of my childhood in Bonita and, you know, I think it was made clear that there are a lot of reasons to move forward with the Banyan Tree project. My ask is pretty simple. You've done a great job revitalizing downtown. Don't take your foot off the gas. Please approve Option One for DPZ's plan. I've seen it. I've spoken to others who are in favor of it, other community members, and I truly believe it will make a huge difference to bring community together in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Morning, Mayor, Council, staff. Thank you guys all so much for your work that you're doing on downtown to echo our first two speakers here. My name is Chris Magnus with Rooftop at Riverside. Many of you know me. We have four kids. My oldest son is 11. My oldest daughter's almost nine and I have two six-year-old twins. And when they want to go to a park, they want to go somewhere that's not in Bonita. So I encourage you guys, please select Option One and allocate significant funds to this park. Let's make Bonita Springs a place for families. Let's make Bonita Springs a place where grandparents can take their grandchildren, parents can take their kids, a place where families can convene and gather with not only a great project in, in Option One, but give the trust in your staff. Let's not get stuck in the minutia of all of it. Approve Option One. Staff has done such a great job with so many things. Give them the options to put in just the most incredible splash pad you've ever seen, the most incredible playground you've ever seen. Let's draw people to Bonita Springs and let's make this the true gem of Bonita. We have this beautiful, beautiful tree. We have some great options. Let's not get stuck in the minutia. Approve Option One, please, and trust staff to do a terrific job like they continue to do. We have high expectations of staff and they continually surpass it. So thank you all so much. Please approve Option One with significant funds to make that area the most incredible place to be in Bonita Springs. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I can't follow Pastor Kyle back there, but I can, I can say that I'm Trish Leonard and I am gratefully Bonita Springs resident as well as a business owner and I have just left to my new predecessor, the Bonita Springs Downtown Alliance, and I wanted to say thank you to each of you, Council, for, for being part of that. But I'm here today to support the Option One that's presented in your packet. You know, you've done a great job, a great job with our downtown and I don't want to see it stop. I, I saw the signs up about the trucks. Those are going up. Thank you for that as well. I too have grandchildren, although they're bigger grandchildren, so I'm sure they would like to put their feet in the water after they have a little fun at the rooftop. But anyway, I want to say thank you. Thank you for all you've done and thank you for being who you are. And so we're looking forward to seeing what your decision is today.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mike Gibson for the record, current president of the Downtown Alliance. I'm here to speak on Option One for the Banyan Tree Lot. I think it's a great way to keep moving forward with this. It still leaves room to add more things later down the road if we do decide we need a meeting room or bathrooms there. Currently, I don't believe we do. I also kind of like the uplighting with digital, so that way, most of the time, you know, the uplighting kind of looks beautiful throughout the year, but then we can use the digital to really kind of enhance different, throughout the year, you know, different occasions. The other thing I wanted to speak on was the Wonder Gardens. I'm looking forward to the workshop coming up. You know, I do believe that, you know, they need to have a little more, they need to start paying back the city a little bit. I believe they do need to have rent, but I think the city and they need to work together to actually get all the improvements cohesively. That way, they're not, you know, putting in the cart ahead of the horse and everybody needs to work together. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mike.
For the record, my name is Jim Magnus, resident of Bonita Springs. Good morning, Mayor, Council, and city staff. I'm here to talk about item number 10, Banyan Tree parcel. I was happy to see the green sheet, the project that past mayors and council member, members have talked about for so many years. It's time and this is the council that can get the job done. The firm hired by the city, DPZ, has done a wonderful job in proposing concepts for this parcel. Please do not overthink this one. Option One presented by DPZ is a good, solid concept and should be approved. The plan will make the Banyan Tree parcel a destination for families. The plan maintains an openness for that whole area, just so beautiful to be able to see through it and to see everything from, from where you are. It'll save you money on holiday lighting as the Banyan Tree will already be lit. You'll be able to use multicolored lights for different holidays. St. Patrick's Day, you can do green. You've got orange for, for Halloween. You've got the sun shades there, which will protect people from the hot sun. The splash pad will provide a new activity for the kids to cool off. Benches will provide areas for people to sit and rest and people to just kind of watch the park and watch the wheel go by. The memorial on the corner of Reynolds in Old 41 will maintain and be right where it is and stay right where it is. The same thing with the rotary clock will be maintained. Mayor and Council, you've got a dedicated, responsible, thoughtful, and capable staff. I request that you make a motion and approve the concept for the DPZ Option One and rely on staff to get it done. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Council. Ariane Antonucci, just here to support DPZ One. The, the Banyan Tree Park is, I believe, a focal point of the city of Bonita. You guys have done a great job in providing infrastructure and building the downtown project. One of the co-founders of Sugar Shack and the downtown, Sugar Shack Downtown, and, and just to see that project come together with, with the Banyan Tree and everything you guys have done, you know, I'm a husband and a family man, so just having a place for families to kind of go to, you know, parks are, I feel neglected in this area and I, and I think this is a really great option for, for everything for the downtown. I mean, it's a focal point. That Banyan Tree is beautiful. Everything that's on the option is great with the lighting and the splash pads. I just want to see that go through, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Peggy Baker, one of the co-owners of Chartreuse Craft Cocktail Lounge, and back in 2016, Danielle and Steve Dyer and I started investing in downtown Bonita. And we did that because we could see that it was growing and that things were going to start happening. That's been seven years ago. So I'm here today to support Option One. I hope you guys will move forward with that and make downtown a destination point for families and people who are not just passing through to get to Naples or up to Fort Myers.
I'm not supposed to do this, but why are, what's so popular about Option One?
I think it's just that it's more open and it gives like people the opportunity to see the whole downtown area. You've got a, a vision from the band shell all the way across to the library and it just opens up the whole area and gives families more of a place to come and enjoy Bonita. So, okay.
Anybody else? Okay, now we've got proclamations and presentations. Fred, do you want to come up front or do you want to read it where you are?
Actually, I'm going to do it a little bit different. I can do it standing up though.
Okay.
Better hold the mic though, right?
There you go.
This proclamation really is to recognize the Florida League of Cities and what they do for all of us cities. They have roughly 414 cities. The only ones that they don't have is a handful of little cities of 1,000, 500. Every year, they really work hard to try and keep the spirit of home rule alive. A lot of times, our government will pass something that preempts cities and counties from running a show in a certain area. Many of those things are good, but some aren't. I think they, they look out for our best interest. They really, they don't profit by any of this stuff. Because we pay dues no matter what happens, which they try their best. I can't say that I agree with everything they support 100%, but they do pretty good. Their batting, and their batting average is good and they do work with the state assembly to make sure that their points are made, they compromise and all that. Now, I'm going to ask Mike, our clerk, to read the resolution that's signed by the board.
Proclamation.
Proclamation. Whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents and whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home and whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and an understanding of its many responsibilities and whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of its services and their benefits and whereas Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word to all citizens that they can shape and influence this branch of government and whereas the city of Bonita Springs proudly supports educational partnerships with city government and local schools through activities such as hosting and facilitating Student Government Day at City Hall. Now therefore, Mayor Rick Steinmeier, on behalf of the city council, hereby proclaims October 16th through 22nd, 2023 as Florida City Government Week in the city of Bonita Springs and encourage all citizens, city officials, employees to recognize and celebrate, celebrate Florida City Government Week. I forgot to say, they're about 102 years old, so they were in business when it was the Horse and Buggy Days.
Yeah. Okay, great. Nicole, you got presentation you coming up? We have a presentation for, for a loyal servant, a loyal public servant, 15 years.
So we are very excited today to honor our pool manager, Jesse. He has been with the city for 15 years, so I am happy to have been with him all of those 15 years. So, but he is an excellent leader to his staff. He mentors just in overall operations of the pool. We have received numerous awards for top safety facility in the whole state, so, as well as the whole country. So, and that is under Jesse's leadership, so we did want to thank him for all that he's done, as well as he has won the Phoenix Award from the Fire Department. So he is the best. We, we are happy to have him here. The Phoenix Award is actually for saving a life. Jesse has saved, saved a life at our, our pool along with another lifeguard. So the Fire Department recognizes them in, in lifesaving.
Saving somebody's life.
Correct.
I'd be proud of that.
Yes, very, very proud.
Well, I also have had the opportunity to work with Jesse for his 15 years, because I started when I was 12 years old. And Jesse has always come up with creative ideas. He always finds solutions. After Hurricane Irma, he jumped right in working to help with our fountain with creative ways. If you ever see the fountain with suds, you'll see Jesse with waiters in the fountain helping. He and his staff on their own created a community garden at the pool where actually residents contributed to plants as well and he helped encourage that as, so he's always coming up with creative ideas to include our residents and make them feel welcome at our facility. So we thank you for that, Jesse. And this is presented for your 15 years of service on this third day of October 2023 in appreciation and recognition of 15 years of public service to the citizens of Bonita Springs, Florida, signed by Mayor Rick Steinmeier and City Manager Arlene Hunter. Congratulations.
Okay. Now we move on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any comment? No, that's for after. Let's vote on this.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Do you have any comments about the agenda that we just passed? Okay. Here we are down to the DPZ design of the Banyan Park. My opinion, we don't need any fences. It's public property. The fences take up a lot of room, a constant maintenance expense. They waste a lot of space. It costs money to put down, take care of. Don't need any fences. As far as the substation, we have a splash park and a children's park. I think we need somebody in authority to supervise these children and to keep them safe. So that, in that case, we are not ready to move the Sheriff's Department to the old library yet. We need to do work on the old library. I would like to go forward with Option Two. Initially with the...
Wait, are you making a motion?
I'm talking. You're interrupting.
Okay.
Okay. So our, the substation, we're planning on moving it to the, the old library, but the old library needs some work before we can move there. So I would hope we can keep the substation there till we, for a period of time until we can get the old library in usable condition. That's my comments. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, we have...
Motion to approve Option One.
I think we have discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second for?
Option One.
Option One? Okay.
Now we have discussion. Discussion. Why are you in favor of Option One?
Option One? Well, I can give you a number of reasons, but let's start with the fact that the substation isn't currently active on Old 41. So their substation is over off Coconut Road, so if our argument is that it's about the substation, that's not a good argument. That aside, that is the most valuable piece of property that we have yet to finish as we bring our downtown finally to fruition. If you put it in ways, this is the location that you show up at. This is a tree that we fought the, you know, offers from counties and developers and everybody about. And of all of the designs, if you look at them, this is the most aesthetically pleasing and it's the most responsible decision for us as a city moving forward. I feel like if you looked in your inbox, you'll see probably 100 emails and you didn't see anybody who asked for Option Two. Additionally, you had a full house today. I didn't hear anybody in favor of Option Two. So again, based on what is currently done there and the reason that you thought we shouldn't do it, that's not an act, that, that's not a good reason, number one. Number two, the people have spoken. Number three, looking at it, of all of the options, it clearly is the best option. And again, it's time to hit the gas. We've been circling for 20 years on this, so we can, we can punch it through today, right now, and I think we should do that.
Vote.
There's other comments. Niles?
Nigel, close enough. I don't think that we could say anything better than what their speaker said this morning. I agree absolutely with Jesse. The, nothing against the Sheriff's Department, but the substation's been a parking lot for their vehicles for about three, four years now. That's all it serves. There's no active police presence. I think there'll be more activity once we put in the park and, and approve the Banyan Tree project. Thoughtful design, lots and lots of discussion. I think it's time to end it. And finally, I look at Option One. It's fiscally the most responsible option there. So we're all about doing the right thing with our taxpayers' money. It's fiscally responsible. Let's approve Option One.
Yes, Fred.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with what Jesse said. I think one thing we should make sure, we need to have DPZ in the thing till it's fully designed. When I mean fully designed, there's different ways to walking paths and all that can be put in and I think we want to have a minor little continuing input from DPZ, but Option One is what we should do. And I do think at some point, we'll, we'll probably need to see if we can get some police present certain times of the day, but it wouldn't be on that site. It could be across the street, but it needs to happen because police presence keeps problems from becoming bigger problem.
Anybody else? I...
Mayor and Council, we just had one recommendation for your consideration is if when in the design, if you would let us look at the underground utilities to make sure should, down the road, you want to add other facilities that the, that we've looked at the infrastructure, that we haven't prohibited bathrooms or building afterwards in the, in the construction.
So down the road hypothetically, but that doesn't stop the process of us approving that and moving forward today. So down the road hypothetically, but that doesn't stop the process of us approving that and moving forward today.
Correct. And then to address Councilman Forbes' question, we have a continuation contract on all development in the downtown with DPZ, where we have the ability to use them as continuing services to review design from architects that we use locally for work.
Okay, with all the business people that were here today promoting it, number one, are they willing to have a municipal taxing unit to improve this part? Are you willing to pay for what you want?
This is the cheapest option, and why would they be paying for it? We're the ones who set the agenda on improvements for the city. That's what we do. We don't ask them to do it. That's like, just because they live in close proximity to it.
Is that the only part of the city that needs any work?
No, there's a lot of things in the city that need work. But and we've, everything that we aesthetically could have worked on, we've already done. We've put fifty million dollars in the ground down there. We have approved the Collier Development. We have the food truck park coming. We have Sugar Shack coming. So all of these things are coming. But and they are paying us in taxes to begin with. So to say, hey, this is a city thing. You guys should set up a tax district and do it yourself. No, that's not how it works. This is, I mean, this is what we have a budget for. We're supposed to manage the budget to take care of the city personally.
This is our central.
This is it. You don't put this on the business owners.
Have we put this in the budget? Is it in our budget?
We currently have a line item in the CIP. What we'll have to do is work most likely with one of our design builders contracts that we have currently in procurement. We'll have to come back with a contract price that would typically be approved on your consent agenda. And if there's a necessary budget amendment, you would have to place that in the same agenda so that the funding's there for that contract.
If, and this is the cheapest option.
Should you need a budget transfer.
Should you need, okay.
So I call for the question.
I have one more comment, and that is very simply, I don't want to use the word fail, but the people have invested in downtown, have invested in downtown, especially some of these business owners, based on what previous councils have promised, what we as a council have said we're going to do going forward. Why would we reneg on that promise?
Well, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying that we have, we could do it in stages. And the police department, I, the substation, as Fred mentioned, we need some child protection in that area. I'm sorry, because people love to prey on children. We don't have the work done on the library to move our substation to the public library.
They're in there. They're in, listen, they're in Coconut, they're in Coconut Road. You keep saying this, and it's not going to be true. It doesn't matter if you say it ten times. They aren't operating.
You're out of order.
You're out of order. You're out of order.
You're interrupting me.
Okay, so you don't understand, okay, you don't understand what's happening. What I'm telling you, they are not operating the police force off Old Forty-One. So to keep saying, we can't do it because of the police, no, that's not accurate. The number of police officers doesn't change contractually. We just added more police officers because we needed them. But again, the fact that there's a building there, it's an empty building they do nothing with. They park cars there. So yes, we do need more police officers. But the fact that the building is there or not there is irrelevant to the conversation at hand.
Mr. Mayor, can I share a story? When I first came on council, I was so curious about that substation. I went and I pushed the button, and I kept pushing it. And finally, a voice came on, yeah, what are you doing? Well, I'd like to see inside, want to know when you guys are around. We do not have anything to do with that building for years, and this is now five years ago. So Jesse is correct. They moved their substation. It's beautiful, and they haven't been there, and they're not there. And they don't respond to the buzzer really quickly. They're surprised anyone would hit the buzzer. So I think we should just vote. You.
So the very first thing you're going to do is tear the building down.
No, that's not the first thing. They're going to address.
Last thing you're going to do.
No, read, look at one, option one, and it kind of goes through it. But yes, the building at some point will come down. But no, first, we're going to address the parking and the outline of it. And then in time, yes, it will come down. But the reason on the backside, they were talking about, let staff look into what the infrastructure side might look like. If they want to do bathrooms or something like that down the road, and it makes sense, then we could do it. So they were leaving the door open for that. But either way, that building is probably going to come down. The question is, will another building come up that's bathrooms or not? That bathroom itself, either way, is going to come down. Either way, we're going to pay for it to come down. And currently, it's occupying very valuable, very valuable property, and it's not, it's zero functionality, zero.
Okay, so we have a bathroom, there's a Sugar Shack and a rooftop.
We have thirty-four bathrooms within.
Library, Ruberside.
Library, Sugar Shack.
Thirty-four, thirty-four bathrooms.
The banjo.
Within proximity, and that's not including Depot Park. So thirty-four, when you put the local restaurants, the library, the library has eleven, and you can literally see it from there. So I'm saying, between Sugar Shack, between the food truck park, between Chartreuse, between Depot Park, between all of these other restrooms, like if you had to go to the bathroom really, really bad, you couldn't be in a better spot than where we're putting this.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know.
I think I shared the last meeting, I was up in Asheville, bigger town. They have a much bigger facility in their downtown. There wasn't a bathroom within a block of their park. The closest one was actually their city hall. So what we've got right now is more than adequate to handle what we need for the next five, six, seven, eight years.
Okay, how about the fence around the park?
There's no fence.
There's no fence.
There's no fence. And number one, number one has no fence. There was one that had a fence, but the one that we're all asking for, one that you're asking about, there's no fence on that one.
So I think we should take a vote.
Maybe that was part of the misunderstanding, but.
Mayor and council, I think you would expect, as we do with all projects, we would coordinate with the sheriff's office, just as we did with the parking lot, you know, of their, any equipment they have there or vehicles. I do understand that they do meet in the parking lot there, especially when we have special events there. The bathroom's still utilized there by them for their staff, but we would coordinate all those activities prior with them in the construction process, as we do with any project that affects the Fire Department or BSU. It's part of a coordination process that we work with. And I also, you were talking about safety, and we'll have cops present, but you're going to a park, most people go as families, so the parents are going to be there, hopefully to protect their children that are there.
That's a thought.
I mean, it's a park. Most people go as families to the park.
Children, whatever, we can't be a hundred percent safe. Anything else?
No, I think there's a majority on council to pass this motion, and I think we should just call the question and vote.
Did we resolve that fence?
There is no fence.
There is no fence in option one. Look at the picture.
I second Laura's call for the question. Now you have to vote on it, and then more discussion.
There's a motion and a second to call the question. That, as the vice mayor was indicating, that requires a vote, and then there'll be a second vote on the question if it passes.
Okay, vote on call.
Councilmember Purdon.
We're voting on the call to question?
Correct. In debate.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Mayor Steinmeier.
No.
Councilmember Corey.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Yes.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion on item one.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Thank you, folks. About time we moved forward with that part. Now we get into the good, Wonder Gardens. What are we going to do with the Wonder Gardens? What's the future of the Wonder Gardens? This is my item. We've got, I want seven different opinions on, or seven opinions on the future, the present, the future and the past of Wonder Gardens downtown Bonita. Who wants to start, Fred?
Yeah, I've got two things. I think I agree with.
We'll interrupt you a second here. Now, this is in preparation for November first meeting with their board of directors, and I'm sure they'll come up with some, they'll know what they're talking about.
I think part of our agenda should include some kind of a reasonable rent, so they're making some effort to put some cash back in our pocket to keep working on, doing stuff on the building. Number one. Number two, on the agreement, I for one, I don't, I hope we do not eliminate one clause that's in the existing contract. Either party with the notice being given for six months to the other party can walk away from the contract. That means we have a right to cancel the contract with a six-month notice, and they do. And that original idea was Peter O'Flin's, and then it started to fall out of the agreement, and I reminded the council that it was be in it, and it got in it, and should stay in it.
Comment?
Yeah.
It also says that the Wonder Gardens runs it exclusively during those six months. So you've just said, we're ending your contract and leave. And I think at the workshop, we can go over all of these things. I don't think we need to hash this out now. If everyone, if like Fred, you just gave us something, if people want to put their points down in paper, fine, but it should be a flowing, a workshop. So we sit down and we go over the issues.
Well, we're doing that right now. We want to be, know what we're talking about before we sit down with these people.
Well, did you read the contract and make your own notes? Did you do your homework?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Then what's your opinion about? You don't like alligators, do you?
Why, why would we do this and then redo it in a workshop?
You don't listen well. We've got seven different opinions, right? You see that? We've got seven different opinions as to what the Wonder, they're going to come in as a unified body, and we're going to go back and forth like we're a bunch of idiots, don't know what we're talking about. I want to come up with some sort of direction.
I believe all of us will know what we're talking about, and we'll have the information and the facts on our side.
Time out, how about this? I think the mayor has a good idea. He wants us to all get our ideas out now, so why don't we individually do that? Then if somebody comes up with a bad idea that, or an idea you don't like, then when it's your turn, address it on your turn. And then that way, we're not stopping each individual person, and then we can actually finish.
Yes, Jesse, thank you.
Yes.
Fred, are you done?
I think there's one other thing we should put on the agenda. I think before they go out and start fundraising, they need to do two things. Get with building inspection to make sure that what they're going to do can be done reasonably at a reasonable cost, and also clear it with our staff. Because right now, they decide to do something, they just run out, say, this is what we're going to do. Now, if that isn't feasible or it costs too much, then makes them look bad. And then we get blamed for it probably because everything is blamed on building inspection and community development, and all they're doing is trying to enforce the rules.
Okay, Nigel, would you like?
Yes, sir, thank you. I have taken the time to look at some of the things that I have concerns with. One is the fact that a business plan is out there that none of us saw until it was produced at great expense, I might add. The level of communication between our.
Sir? Could you take your call up on the hallway? Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt your phone call. At the end of the day, the lack of communication between the Wonder Gardens and council and the city is a concern to me. That's something we need to address. I don't think they act like a tenant. I think they act like, quite honestly, that there's an ownership there. And the ownership is the people of Bonita Springs. Secondly, the whole idea that changes have been made in the building, work's been done that the city's not aware of, that's a concern to me. Some of it has not been permitted, and again, that's our property. So my biggest concern with the Wonder Gardens is, A, do they understand what their responsibilities are as tenants? And B, the improvements that I saw that they want to make, doing the math, I saw about eight point one million dollars. I don't know where that's going to come from, but I'd like them to explain it to be other than there's going to be philanthropic efforts in our community to raise eight million dollars when we couldn't raise, or they couldn't raise enough money to buy it. And if it wasn't for the city, the Wonder Gardens wouldn't be there, and I know that for a fact. They would not be there as they are today.
You had your time, Fred, when we come back.
Okay.
Chris?
I'm not so sure that the Wonder Garden Board is as unified as we may fear. There's a number of Wonder Garden Board members that I see every week at Rotary. And they are certainly aware that there has got to be changes made in the operating agreement. They are aware that there's deficiencies in the way in which the board is operated, and the Wonder Gardens have been managed, it has to be changed. So I think the key is to understand that they are under some pressure themselves. Steve McIntosh, who former mayor of the city, leads a fundraising group for the Wonder Gardens.
He's a what? He's a councilman. He was never the mayor.
You ran for mayor.
Okay, you ran for mayor against Simmons, I'm sorry. Should have won.
Against me, too. But anyways, go ahead.
You ran all the time, so I can't keep track of that.
And look what.
All right, let's stay on track.
But anyway, their fundraising efforts are hampered because the donors are saying, look, we got to have an operating agreement, so we need to focus on that operating agreement. Get in there what we think we need. We need to at least have some say over who gets on that board. We need to have the right to be, to vet whoever they want to come on the board, to make sure that they've got the experience and credentials to serve on that board. So we, you know, but I think we have to go into this saying that we want this to be a successful public-private partnership. And I think there are people of goodwill that are on that board that are willing to work with us. But yeah, I think the mayor's right. We need to understand what we want to have. But I don't know that we want to go in there ready to pick a fight. I think we just need to sit down, understand that we're probably going to see some reasonable people, we're going to be able to work something out. I think they understand the issues that we're worried about, and I think they're also under pressure with respect to fundraising. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Jamie, would you please?
Yeah, I mean, being here all my life and having the Wonder Gardens here, I would hate to see that not exist any longer. And so I really hope that we can come together and make some decisions and where every part, both parties agree, and to see it continue to grow.
Hey, Jesse?
Okay, so this is not me being the bad guy. This is just being fully transparent on my issues in hopes that they hear it and they're prepared for the meeting. First of all, the main overarching issue that bleeds into all these other issues is that they don't understand their spot at the table. And that can be demonstrated by how they tried to come during the middle of our downtown and tell us we shouldn't do the downtown because they wanted to expand their facility when they were not in an agreement with us, when we had been working on that for twenty years. When they were trying to put in a purchase to buy and procure land directly across the street from the Wonder Gardens, from a private developer downtown, without our knowledge, and then we find out later, they tell us they don't have money, yet they're trying to buy these properties adjacent. They have, you know, the restaurant deal where they said in writing and what they wanted to do, then they lied to our staff, came to the meeting, and turned it into a circus, made us look like the worst people in the world on the front page when that was not ever how this was supposed to work. Point being, that board, that's the same board that sent the previous director to our meeting to tell us we shouldn't approve the downtown. So that executive director's gone. I haven't met the new one, so I'm not saying anything about the new executive director. I'm not saying anything about the direction they're going. But whoever these new board members are, or the current board members, they have to understand the history of this. You've been out of contract with us, and you've been a bad actor and a bad partner in multiple ways on multiple fronts that I just outlined. Additionally, in the current operating contract that we have, they have a dollar rent. That doesn't work for me. They have nothing towards capital improvement projects in regards to what we will see as capital improvement projects. It's what they see as capital improvement projects, which again, the capital improvement project bus is driven by us. It isn't driven by them. So you don't get to have non-compliant ADA bathrooms, yet raise money for an animal hospital on our property that hasn't been approved when you aren't even in a valid contract with us. So for a number of reasons, you can see why I see that's problematic, on top of the idea that you're raising money to the public from Bonita Springs, saying you're going to deliver on something that again, we've never even seen. And the only time that we saw it was when we were. And the only time that we saw it was when we were given finances, and again, it was a variation of the finances we had received months earlier. And simply, they moved the money to these big capital improvement projects that, again, are infrastructure on our land that we never even knew about. I'm not against animal hospitals, I'm against how they are consistently out of process, and their failure to understand why any of us would have an issue with that is really the issue. So I don't even know, it's almost that with the long history and all of these other issues, if they don't come to the meeting with the understanding of, okay, here is how we probably misstepped, and here are the things we need to do to make it right, I don't think we have a productive meeting, because they don't see themselves as a vendor, they don't see us as the property owner. They see themselves as the owners and us as an inconvenience that they have to deal with. They are operating their nonprofit on a, on the Imperial River frontage. We've put $50 million in the ground, they don't pay any rent. You tell me one nonprofit anywhere who wouldn't want that deal? We have to treat everybody the same. All vendors are the same. How you do things on our property has to be consistent, and you don't get to work and walk around us in every way that you possibly can, and go at us in the media, and think that everything's going to be okay, because at the end of the day, it's ours. You work with us, through us, and that's the only way. And if you don't want to play by those rules, I'm not against going out for an RFP to find somebody who will play by those rules. I love the Wonder Gardens, I don't want them to go away. But I do need them to understand that it's been since 2018, it's 2023. We need to get a plan that is fair for the citizens of Benita Springs to get this on track. And if they don't come to the meeting ready to do that, then I think the larger discussion is, how do we move forward? Because they've been out of contract since I pulled it last time, and I don't feel like it's, we're any step closer to renewing it. So how long are we going to let them operate in there without a contract? And the board members being vetted, Chris, I like that. Because if you think about it, every committee that we have in the city, do they not go through us? Do we not see, and we're not like, do we not vote? Do we not understand who the players are? If they have this much value, and they have us in a position like they have us, which in, in some ways, they have us over a barrel when it shouldn't be that way, then we need to fix that. And now is the opportunity to do that, and this meeting is the first step of what hopefully isn't too many steps, but long story short, these things need to be addressed. If they are not addressed, I'm not interested in moving forward, and I don't think there's going to be much of an appetite on behalf of the others. So, that's it.
Okay. Young lady? You're younger than me, I can call you a young lady.
Yes.
Your turn.
Yes, and I will cede my time to Fred, and I will raise my issues with staff in private. I believe the Wonder Gardens board members understand contract law. I know at least one person does. So like Jesse said, you know, we have to come up with a contract that is mutually beneficial for the citizens of the, of Benita Springs, and that the Wonder Gardens is happy, too, and the council's happy. And we do have a liaison, but that's another story. So I'm giving Fred my time.
Two things. One, I think it was the last meeting or another one, there was a big thing about, well, you know, if they add on to the building, they own on, they own the add-on. They don't. That's a lease, standard lease agreement is whatever the renter, or the leasing, or whatever puts in the building, when they leave, the property owner owns it, and that's us. Secondly, I like Chris's idea. I think the other thing we want to do when we look at who's on the board, and the officers in particular, they need to be officers that have knowledge about how the board operated in the past. The current, one of the officers, one of the senior officers, doesn't even live in Benita, and he doesn't, wasn't on the board until he got on the board and he got beat the head up. And that, that needs to be remedied, because that's not good not to know the history that went on if you're going to run an organization.
There's one thing in the contract you just brought up that is valuable. They said, they have it set up right now in the contract that all assets raised through memberships, fees, and merch-
Goes to them.
Essentially, it goes to them, meaning anything they procure that isn't in the ground, they get to walk with if we go sideways. I don't like that when we are not in a financial agreement with them to begin with. So that means essentially, you can operate your business until we say get out, and you get to walk with everything that you have, if that was what you wanted to do.
And you get six months to do it.
And you have six months to do it. I don't like that. So we do need to address that part of the contract, too.
Yes.
Just a comment, that we've got the public here, we've probably got a few, couple hundred people watching on television, and probably members of the Wonder Garden Board. So what I want to say is, we're not coming into this with swords and torches and pitchforks. What we're asking for is communication. We haven't received that. The city's done a phenomenal job of communicating, but it's been a one-way street. That's our major concern. Secondly, Jesse, Laura's point, the fact that a previous board of directors of the Wonder Gardens, of which some are no longer members, did not act in good faith. I think that's history, I think we discuss it, but then we move on. I think they should know as a council, we're here to listen, we want to be good partners and good landlords, but we need to fix it. On behalf of the city, on behalf of the council, and staff. Staff's the one that takes the most abuse on this, they're the ones that have to do all the heavy lifting. So again, the message to them would be, come in prepared, come in understanding what your role is as a tenant and not an owner, and we're willing to listen.
Okay, my turn. Who's going to fix the roof when the roof leaks? Is that us, the city? I guess it does. We have responsibility as a landlord to maintain our buildings, don't we? Are we doing that? Are we maintaining our, you know, the other side of the coin is we've got to put some money in if we're going to maintain our property. Now, if they would be willing to use some of their contributions to do maintenance on different areas, especially ADA compliance stuff, if we could give them credit towards a rent, and we come up with some sort of rent, so we could get things done without them saying, well, this money's going to go, going to build this and this, and we're going to own it because we put our money into it. We have, there's a lot of opportunity here to come up with some solutions to a very complex problem. And I think this conversation is good for us to look at what we have to work with. I'm not, I, I love the Wonder Gardens, I've been in there for 60 years, probably. My two older brothers, they both wanted to become veterinarians because of it. The one did, and the other one couldn't get independent, but, so I want the Wonder Gardens to survive and thrive. We've got to come to a workable agreement, like those tea houses that were brought in, who owns them? We own them, or they own them? There's a lot of different things, so we've got to be ironed out. This workshop is only going to be for an hour and a half, I hope we can get through, get some sort of understanding. We may have to have more than one workshop on this, this situation. But I want the Wonder Gardens to survive and thrive. So I'm glad we had this conversation. Staff has witnessed this, the public's witnessed this. So on the first of November, at 5:30, at four o'clock on the first of November, we're having a workshop here. Are there rules about public comment at the workshop? We don't take any votes, or?
Correct, there'll be no votes at the public workshop, but there will be an opportunity for public comment.
So you're, please come and listen, make your comments at the workshop, and we'll move forward and keep Benita moving forward. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Yes, is the existing contract online, so if somebody does come from the public, they can read the contract? And it's an agreement, it's not actually a lease agreement, it's an operating agree, it's, it's a funky document.
It's an expired operating agreement.
Let me just-
Yeah, let's, attorney talk, you're not-
It's available, it is available on the city's website, if you go under city documents and you look for the operating agreement, you can, you can find it. But since, I believe, 2020, we have been working on a revised agreement I sent out to the, the council. There are differences between the Everglades Wonder Gardens Board's revisions to that agreement and my agreement, but essentially, meant, most of those issues about who owns what, those have all been resolved. So we're already mostly on the same page on that. Some of the outstanding issues you'll see in the Wonder Gardens draft, which are, they would like the opportunity to possibly acquire the property from the city at some point in the future, things like that, those are areas of, of continued discussion.
Did they change the name to Wonder Gardens, or is it still the Everglades Wonder Gardens?
Their, I think their corporate name is Wonder Gardens, I don't believe it's Everglade, Everglades Wonder Gardens. I believe that that entity no longer exists.
Well, they took-
How does that, just disappear?
No, they took-
They decided to change the name?
It, it has more to do with, recall, there, there was one entity that owned the property, then, then we're looking to sell the property, the, the group that now can, that operates the, the functions bought the assets of that entity, and had a contract to acquire the property, could not come up with the funds, got a loan from the city to acquire the, the money, weren't, weren't able to achieve their fundraising goals in time, so the city essentially foreclosed on the property. And that's, and then we afterwards entered into the operating agreement under which the facility is now being run. There were concerns a couple of years ago that they were, the tea houses, other items were being done that were in contravention of the processes and approval processes within that, as well as there were requests by some council members to, to revisit the rent. So we indicated our intention to terminate the agreement and to negotiate a new agreement. And that's where we have been.
And how long have we been there?
Since COVID. Since COVID.
I, I do want to clarify that I'm pretty positive the current operating document is not on the website, as we were revising ADA documents. So we will make sure that when we post the agenda for this meeting, we would attach the current operating agreement and any drafts that, that the city attorney provides, and then would, it would be updated.
So what's the name of it? How did we change the name? It's a historical building, how can we change the name? From Everglades Wonder Gardens to Wonder Gardens?
Not about changing, the, the name of the facility doesn't, is not affected by the name of the, the corporation which runs it.
So historically, it's still the Everglades Wonder Gardens?
That's how it's identified.
That's how it's identified.
We're just talking about, that's just a legal name, that's like the legal name with the EIN for tax purposes, what it's identified as.
Actually, they copied-
They advertise it as the Everglades.
But they, they still do advertise it as Everglades, but what they put in, it's, it's kind of like DB it, Doing Business As, kind of deal, because their actual legal name is not that. But yes, the sign and everything like that, none of that's, I don't think they plan on changing any of that, if that's what you're thinking.
It's more to do with the licensing issue.
It's more, yes. Who's, who's the legal entity, what's it owned under, is really what that's about. But as far as how it looks on the outside, aesthetically, none of that changes for us.
Well, they took away the sign with the alligator over top of it.
I think there was damage, but they're going to put it back up. There's damage from the hurricane, but I think they're still working on it. But I don't think the Everglades Park's coming off.
Mayor, can I ask, Derek, what is the legal entity? Are they a foundation? Are they a corporation? They are a nonprofit, correct?
They are a nonprofit. It is, the current name is Benita Wonder Gardens, Inc.
Thank you.
And that's a business?
Do you have a business name?
Nonprofit.
So when they bought it from the folks, it was, they bought, when they bought the Everglades Wonder Gardens, they bought it as a nonprofit called the Wonder Gardens and didn't have the Everglades in it. So that's why the sign is still there, but that's why it's Doing Business As under that name.
If you're not going to sign that card, would you please pass it to Chris?
Will you shut up?
Oh, come on.
Oh, come on, now.
We can act better than this, we really can.
Oh, yeah, I, you're going, you know, okay, you, you're going to be interrupted every 10 minutes by this gal for, for three years, and, and I can't tell her how I feel.
You can tell her how you feel after the meeting.
All right, I told her how I feel.
You're in front of the public now.
Okay. I told her to-
No.
Or in a cordial, polite way.
Okay, for one thing I do, I'm going to apologize-
Thank you.
For Mrs. Carr, I didn't realize last meeting that she was the liaison for Fort Myers Beach, and I sort of, sort of, sort of shortened her discussion of Fort Myers Beach last meeting. And I apologize for that, because I didn't realize she was the liaison for Fort Myers As far as saying, please shut up, I, I, I'm not going to apologize for that.
I couldn't find a foreign saying in your Apple Music library, you can ask me to play a radio song.
That was great. Let's move on.
Mayor, I'm going to make a comment. I run a large business, I work for a publicly traded company. When I come to these meetings, I turn my phone off, and I'm going to ask council publicly, we should be doing that. If there's an emergency, we've got a staff out here that can locate us, so let's start off the phones, the beeps, the reading, and focus on our business. I'm asking you as fellow council members to do that, please.
Okay, let's see if we can move on. Yes, I'll sign this, this card when I get a chance to. We're in the middle of a meeting here. Second reading. City clerk, please.
This is the second reading of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs authorizing the sale of a portion of real property located at 27601 Kent Road, Benita Springs, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second. Because this is an ordinance, we do require a public hearing, if there's any members of the public who should speak on it.
This is involved the-
This is the, involving the sale of a piece of property to the, to BSU.
And that is to build a, to, in the future, to put a well in?
I believe that's the intended use.
And, and the water company, it's not immediate, it's in the future, and they have to run a water line out to it before they can make it functional. So I approve it. Okay, motion, vote?
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Cory.
Aye.
Councilmember Fulick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
City attorney items, you have any for us, Derek?
I have no.
Thank you. City managers' items.
Thank you, Mayor and council, this time. We have a draft in front of you of tweaked legislative agenda. As we discussed last time, we were going to try to concise the longer list of priorities for you, and then come back also with some options for appropriations. I believe Hayden Dempsey, our city lobbyist, is also available, he would like to provide just a brief update on the legislative process. Can you hear us, Hayden?
Yes, I can, thank you, Arlene. So, good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, it's a pleasure appearing before you this morning. Session this year begins earlier than it did this previous session. Session begins this year on January 9, it runs through March 8. We have, leading up to that during the fall, we have a number of committee meetings, we're in committee meetings right now. Before you, and I've been working with, with Matt and Arlene and Carly on coming up with your legislative priorities, as well as your appropriations requests, and that's what you have in front of you. Arlene and Matt will be presenting to the Lee County delegation next week or so, and presenting these priorities to them, to begin to that education process. The deadline for filing the appropriations requests is November 14, and so we are well ahead of where we need to be for that. And once we get these filed, then, then we'll begin doing the work that we do up here alongside your Adam Botana and Jonathan Martin, and hopefully can replicate the success we had last year.
So, so Mayor and council, with working with Hayden, you'll see that we did remove some of the items you had previously, we also organized them as far as in line with your strategic priorities. We've, we've placed them, improvement of stormwater management, hurricane Ian recovery, resiliency, we've grouped those together as an A and B, transportation, environmental protection, and then local government, which is the general propose of, of priority that typically all local governments have of home rule. We did remove some of those items, as we said, that we felt may already be covered by the legislature, already supported, so using your, your valuable time focusing on those, they're probably already priorities of, of, of the governor and the legislature already, so to focus more on those that are more important to us. Is there- Is there, if there's anything else you'd like to add or consider, we're happy to hear that. On the reverse side of this page are three appropriations that we're recommending for request. One is the Goodwin Street Stormwater and Pedestrian Safety Improvements Project, and to ask for 2.6 million. We already have that in our CIP, and that is approximately a 30%.
60.
Oh, it's we providing 60% of that match towards that. Our other, and we have 60% in drawing of plans. We're pretty far along on that project. That's typically the types of projects that are appeasing to the legislature that we're ready to go. We're also recommending Rosemary Drive Stormwater and Pedestrian Safety Improvements Project at 1.4 million. You also already have funding within your budget for that project and design and construction of their Lightner Creek soccer complex. Now, there's no, that's a name we provided for this project. The soccer fields have not been named yet. It's to kind of give an area location of where it is. The Lightner Creek does go through Dog Park, Bark and Play Park right there. So we're up to any recommendations on name changes, but that's just a placeholder right there. These, all three would be submitted to both the House and Senate. And then typically what happens is we would then focus on one that was of highest priority. I think with the Goodwin Street project, you are far enough along in that project. Unfortunately, we also had a pedestrian fatality at that location. And it is within the CDVG low to moderate income community. So you do have a very strong case to present to the legislature that this should be a priority project. Now, what, Matt, add anything else?
Just to add, it's an old roadway corridor. Obviously, it requires some condemnation of property, a lot, quite honestly. But there's no existing drainage infrastructure to speak of. So it's, not only do you have the pedestrian fatality, the obvious need for the facilities, it also does do drainage and, you know, water quality. Obviously, when we do drainage, we address that to some degree. So it will help both of those kind of ticket items. Rosemary is similar. You don't have, I don't believe we have any pedestrian fatalities there, but it's also in a low to moderate income area. It's just, we're much earlier in the process. We just selected an engineer, and we're working through the scope and fee for that project. Whereas Goodwin is, really, we have a set of 60% plans, so that's pretty far along.
That's good. Can you tell me what, complete streets, does that mean? You've got the drainage and the lighting and the sidewalks. What does complete street mean?
It's, you know, there's a relativity to that term, but really what, well, this is the truth. It depends on the road. But.
Jesus Christ.
But generally speaking, what it means is that you're, not only are you addressing the needs of vehicular traffic, you're creating facilities that address the needs of other users, walkers and bikers. When I say it's relative, it depends on the corridor. You know, West Terry Street, it's a 12-foot wide path. Here, it's an eight-foot wide path and possibly a six-foot wide sidewalk on one side of the road. So it's both, and no bike path in the roadway. So, but you're still creating facilities that address people other than vehicles.
And drainage.
That's not really in the complete streets. But here in Benita, almost anytime we try to do a complete streets initiative, the space that we're building those facilities on is where the open ditches are. And so to get the space to build the pedestrian facility, you need enclosed drainage.
Okay, how about the lighting?
We put the lighting in, in the corridors where it's appropriate.
And the landscaping.
And the landscaping, because it helps provide that buffer as well.
We're going to get the whole thing in one shot, is what.
That's what we try to do. Yes, sir.
Completely, completely done for now.
Fire and forget.
All right, very good. Anything else? Yes, Fred.
Yeah, now, I'm proposing at the end of your presentation, maybe you take 30 seconds to do two things. This was brought up at the MPO Executive Board meeting that we just had, I think it was last week. Number one, let them know that we, our city, does not support merging Lee County MPO with Collier County MPO. We've got some of the legislators that are interested in seeing that done. If that happens, what happens is our votes are diluted on the MPO because you've got the other MPO in it, and their votes are diluted. Right now, we control what happens in Lee County on new roads and roadway improvements, even the airport and all that. Number one. Number two, we want to let them know briefly, a few seconds, that we do not want 951 coming up and intersecting Benita Beach Road. Because if that happens, it will overload Benita Beach Road unbelievably. It'll force the county to have to widen it, which is going to be horrendously expensive. But guess what? Everything east of Logan Bolvard is a public-private road. And the county's going to have to make a deal with them probably to upgrade it and accept that roadway, which they haven't wanted to do. Now, I gave you all a sketch, and I apologize for the fact that Google Earth somehow, when you want to go up and see the whole city, it goes to, you don't see it. But the little orange or red mark on that, what that represents is this. 951 goes up to Amakley Road. The bottom of that red mark is where Amakley Road would be. The top of it is where it dead ends. But if they extend it there, it does not go through Benita Beach Road. It goes beyond the corporation line to the city. The DRGR is about one-third as wide as it is if you do it through Benita Beach Road. Therefore, they can put an elevated bridge like they do in the Everglades, so don't block the flow. Have continuous support, so it wouldn't be free span. Everything about it is cheaper. We've got to let them know and what they could do if council pleases, will let them, is take this, and maybe the council, maybe staff might want to edit the write-up a bit. Give that as a handout. You don't even have to talk about it, but just let them know that bad things are going to happen if it goes up and intersects Benita Beach Road. If it intersects, even if it goes across, you're still going to get, everybody on 951 that wants to go to High 75 on Beach Road are going to turn and go down that way. And it's a mess.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. So Hayden, on that subject, I'm not sure what you've heard. I've not seen anything filed yet, but long story short, there's been discussion about, potentially for a long time, a north-south route from Naples up to Estero, essentially, with us in the middle. That's something we, for a number of years and a number of different fronts, have fought to keep our autonomy on and allow not to happen. So if there's a movement for that type of route that happens, please alert us so that we can understand the specifics of where that route is. As Fred alluded to, there is a way you can, from Amakley Road in Collier, get up to Coconut and Estero without cutting through the city of Benita Springs portion of the DRGR, I believe, potentially, if they wanted to go that route. But I don't think, oh, corkscrew, I'm sorry, corkscrew is what I meant, I'm sorry. But I don't think that we should be spending our limited political capital on a project that is not going to happen, hopefully, within the confines of the city. And if it is going to come up, I don't, and I definitely don't want to fuel something that potentially could end up indirectly doing exactly what we don't want to happen. So I don't want to feed it, but I want you to pay attention to it. And when and if it comes up, we need to know what that route looks like and who's putting up the legislation and where it's going. And then as a city, we can address it. I don't think we necessarily need to put something together on the books about what we don't want until we see what it is. And then also, I don't know if you've heard about this or not, because again, I looked, I haven't seen anything filed, but there was a lot of discussion this weekend on whether there's going to be a potential discussion for a merger with Benita Springs Fire District and Fort Myers Beach Fire District. And, you know, I don't even want to claim to know the minutia of how that began, set up, or if it's even accurate. But when and if that does become a bill, let us know when that happens and let us understand how it was sponsored. But also, what does that mean to us as taxpayers of Benita? I mean, just looking at BSU, I understand, look, they have no debt. They have a bunch of assets. They have an ongoing stream of income. And Fort Myers Beach isn't in the exact same scenario. So I don't see the benefit from the Benita side. But again, I don't know what the deal is. But when and if this is going to happen, we need to know so that we can understand what the effect on the taxpayer of Benita is, and that way we can opine when and if it's appropriate. But we don't need to be up there anti-it if it isn't filed, because then we're just going to piss people off. So I don't want to do that. But I want you to understand both of those issues and stay on those issues. And when and if they do come up, let us know so we, as a council, can discuss them.
Understood. And Arlene is, has discussed, and Carly have briefed me on the fire merger issue, the fire district merger issue, and so we'll keep an eye out for that. I think the 951 Benita Beach Road issue would likely be filed as an appropriations request because it really wasn't, I don't think it would be a separate legislative item. So we'll be able to see that a little bit earlier than maybe legislation, since there's an earlier deadline for that. But we, I wrote these down, and we will absolutely keep an eye out for them.
Again, there's no opposition to a north-south route. The opposition is through a north-south route, through our city and through the DRGR. I'm not saying that's not great to get from Collier to Estero. I just don't want it through the area that we have fought and spent so many millions of dollars protecting.
Understood.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
My opinion to widen up 29 to 82. This looks like a big pot of water that you don't want to walk through. You don't want to go through that. Yes?
Yes, I did find out that the bill was filed at our local delegation for the fire department merge Monday. And it's going to vote, I guess, at the end of the month. And so I have spoke to the fire department chief, Greg DeWitt, and from what he has said, that he feels strongly that there needs to be a lot more studies and such done on the merge. And he can't promise about taxpayers, and, I mean, he just doesn't know enough to actually make it a thought or decision on that. And he really feels that, you know, there just needs to be a lot more information given, and that it should go in front of the people to vote. And so that Fort Myers Beach chief sounded like he was against it, and, you know, that so far. There was an email drafted from the fire department, and I'd be happy to forward that to Arlene, and we can send it out. And if there's any questions, Chief DeWitt said we can always call him, and he can fill you in on.
Did he give you an indication, did he give you an indication of who was running point on it? Because I heard from people in Fort Myers Beach who didn't want it. I've heard from people in Benita who don't want it. So if both the entities that don't want it are both on a piece of legislation, like, who wants it, and what is the benefit? And who's the benefit for? Like, is this help Fort Myers Beach, is this help Benita? Because neither one of them thinks it helps them, so why is this happening? What is the benefit of merging the two?
That's still undecided from my understanding. That's why I feel like he said the studies need to be done. But from my understanding also, that Representative Botana has started the conversation. I'm not sure if he was the one that filed the bill, but yes, he is in and wanting this to move forward. So, yeah, if there's any questions, like I said, I have all of Chief DeWitt's concerns, and it's about two pages of an email of concerns, and the actual bill that was filed. So I can get that. I just got that this morning. Thank you.
And I support what Jamie's saying, but I want to add one thing. When our fire district was created, when each one of them were created, it took not only the studies and all that, but the people in the district proposed had to vote yea or nay. So what we have is a state trying to override, I think it should be required, if they do pass the bill, that the people in Fort Myers Beach get to vote, and the people in Benita Springs. And if either one turns it down, don't go through, because that's, and they're the people that pay the damn taxes on it, too.
And in most mergers, from my understanding, there's the three steps. You have to have the study, the implementation of it, and then a vote to the people. So that's what Chief DeWitt would like to see done before any decisions are voted on.
One last point, I'm not, I don't disagree with Jesse on this, but in that drawing, actually, Alaco Road is going to be extended out, and it curves, makes a hook, and it could be run right into this proposed.
82.
951 extension, which would be another good thing.
Just a logistical question, and maybe Matt or Arlene, you can answer it. We keep talking about the DRGR. What percentage of the land that they're talking about using in this would be Benita DRGR? And what percent would be Lee County?
None of the Benita.
None of Benita, okay.
So Mayor and Council, I just wanted to kind of go, I know Councilman Forbes mentioned presentation. There probably is less than a minute in the presentation opportunity. Typically, what occurs is there is a thank you to legislature for their previous appropriation and very brief update on how we're progressing with the funds they provided to our community. And then it's an ask for the appropriation. They get a copy of our priorities, but we do not spend that 30, 45 seconds on priorities. We ask for the funds.
We say, we oppose merging Lee and Collier MPO.
That's typically not done during this opportunity. It's typically, maybe a general statement of home rule is provided, but it's generally asked for the appropriation. That might be a more nuanced conversation to have one-on-one, which I know Hayden would be happy to help set up calls and conversations one-on-one with our legislature. But also, if that's something the council as a whole wanted added as a priority, I just wanted to be clear, we don't have to do that today because we left language in the legislative priorities that we're submitting that says this is not an exhaustive list, and new issues may arise and evolve that require council's attention. So if these things do progress in some manner or form, you have every opportunity to add that back onto the list, and Hayden would help distribute that to our folks. The nuances of how we feel about Benita and the DRGR, that's probably left for a longer conversation. We literally have 30 to 45 seconds, and it's, and I think we want to utilize that time to ask for funding.
On a positive note, we want to be positive that we.
Correct. We've always started it with an appreciation and a very brief update of how we've used their money in the community and how we've progressed on that project. And then we ask for the new funding.
If I might add, just the 951 stuff, you know, I know Councilman Cory mentioned it, but those studies that Councilman Forbes is talking about, they are from 2008 and prior. I can't imagine any discussion about a north-south corridor would not require another PD&E process, and you'd have to start to look at ideas like what he has or different. You know, I just can't imagine you could breathe life into something that was that dated at this point. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of time to gather your thoughts, and, you know, if that conversation comes forward, you can articulate ideas a little further.
Along those same lines, I think with this merger discussion, I know, I'll call Botana today because I want to understand what the ask is about. So I would say we shouldn't poo-poo on it until we understand what it's about as a council. So when we find out what it's about, and we find out when and if there's going to be a tax increase for the Benita people, maybe we then fight it, but at the same time, understand, whatever we get out of these three things, we don't get it without Botana. So if this is a big deal for him, and there's not a negative effect for the city, we have to wait that out because we don't, we have to be careful about fighting the battle and understand what and if, what type of effects it's going to have before we fight a battle with somebody who we're going to be asking for money in a couple of months, if that makes sense to everybody.
And I have a follow-up. Oh, go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry.
I agree with that, Jesse. You know, I think the term merger may be a little strong. I think what they're trying to do is to consolidate the management function at the chief level and cut away some of the bureaucracy at top. But Benita Fire would basically stay the same. Fort Beach Fire would stay the same. But that's just what I have picked up in conversation. I do know that there's 17 fire districts in Lee County, and they're trying to figure out going forward if that makes sense, if there's a better way to organize fire protection in Lee County.
fire protection in Lee County. So, yeah, I agree. Let's not get too wrapped around the axle on this until we know the specifics.
And Jesse asked an interesting question. Who was behind, Hayden, this is to you, do you know who's behind the merger, or the joining of Collier and, um, Lee MPO?
No, do not.
'Cause I know, they don't, they're not interested. They make it very apparent. Um, and, and Fred says, and we get deluded, so I'm not sure who's in favor of it if there's no support among the folks that are dealing in the situation.
So, so Mayor and Council, we, we would need a confirmation vote on both the legislative.
Phone officer, please.
On both the legislative priorities, as well as the legislative appropriations request, and this is what we would submit to representative persons for the October thirtieth meeting. If you wanted those items added, Deputy Mayor, we, we need to know that now, if you want anything added, or if you wanna wait, because we do have the language in there that states you can bring those issues forward later.
I think that sufficiently covers us to add a argument later, if we have one. But it doesn't put us in a place where we're, uh, antagonizing somebody if we don't need to, but, so.
Hey, City Manager, you got any more items?
I, I do need a confirmation vote, number one, on the legis, to include the legislative priorities and the legislative appropriations.
Got a motion in a second.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
At this time, I'm gonna ask Matt Feeney to present item B. Uh, this is a, a discussion regarding the, uh, time to solicit. As you recall, we did receive a legis, a congressional appropriation, um, for the home buyout program. It specifically could not be utilized in the Dean, Quinn, and Imperial neighborhoods. Um, staff has worked tirelessly on continued communication with, we, this was required to submit the addresses, um, of these properties prior, uh, as we went through the process. And we've had some fallout from those folks, so we'd like permission from council to request in a letter, uh, additional time for that. We don't know that that will be granted, but we wanted to go through the process.
I can touch base, and we can have Ellie fill in the, the gaps, but, um, this was a quick opportunity. It, uh, we budgeted an eight hundred thousand dollar match for this grant, and our understanding and working with our consultant is that this grant's a little different from some of the ones we've had in the past. You, you really, you had to know exactly what you wanted upfront, and that really wasn't the case. Uh, so, we, we worked tirelessly to kinda get some properties in line. We've reached out to property owners. Some initially were not interested, that we put some effort into, but ultimately, we had a list that led to the, to the, a dollar amount we were comfortable with, and what's happened is properties have sold, they're not interested anymore in, in participating, and some of the other folks have indicated they're, they're no longer interested. Now, this grant is pretty draconian in its administration, which means, you know, our position is, we wanna ask for more time to find more people. That's really not how the grant's set up, and they're, the answer's probably no, but we feel it's our job to, to ask. Uh, you know, we, we won't quit on them, let's, let's let them quit on us. Ellie, can I simply explain it?
Are the people that bought these houses, are they eligible?
No, no, this is not, this is, this is people that are willing to sell to us through this grant program.
The people that bought these houses recently, are they eligible for this?
No, what we look for, um, is existing property owners, uh, who are willing sellers, and that is the key phrase, they have to be willing sellers, to sell their property to us. What we then do is, once we acquire the property, we demolish all the structures. Uh, that includes sidewalks, um, driveways, so you have virgin land, basically. And then the land is, we're required to keep the land in perpetuity. The idea is you don't have another property owner coming in, purchasing, and being in that same position, um, living in a flood-prone area. And then, because it stays in, um, the city's name, then, uh, nothing else can be built there. I'll echo.
That doesn't answer my question.
Okay.
These people were interested in it, and then they sold their houses. Are the people that bought the houses, could they be interested in selling to us?
We have approached the new, the new buyers. They're not interested. The idea is they purchased it for a reason.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So, if, if we do, uh, have permission, we'll, we'll move forward with the letter of request.
Very good.
Um, Hurricane Ian recovery, um, I will check if John had any additional updates, uh, but also wanted to make you aware that we're working with our consultant on our after-action plan. Recently, Lee County issued theirs, we're still in process with our consultants. We're also participating in the FRAC program, which is a new program from the state of Florida that would, as you recall, different with Ian than Irma, we had an opportunity to project what our costs may be, and were able to capture five million, uh, earlier than we did with Hurricane Irma. If you recall, we had to, um, go through all of the expense process, submit those receipts, and then be reimbursed. We were able to get an estimate of fifty percent of our idea of our potential cost. The state is now setting up a formalized program for that, and you have to go through a process to qualify. Lee County is doing that, and our staff is doing that as well. It involves some training, um, some policy updates, so as those things come forward, we'll bring them forward for council's approval and consideration as needed. Um, additionally, we're, we're working on our after-action report, so that we're in compliance with FEMA. That does, uh, require participation from all our department directors, as well as our outside agencies. This will include LCSO, uh, the Fire Department, Benning Springs Fire and Rescue District, as well as Lee County EOC. They will be, all be participating in our, in our process as well. There will be an opportunity for, um, individual meetings with council to update you on the process, and then for you also to provide some feedback for the after-action report as well. So, we're just, um, starting that process now. Once the after-action report is complete, it will be published online and available to the public. I also wanted to remind you all that, uh, November first at four P.M. is our workshop with the Wonder Gardens. We're also asking council's consideration to move the November fifteenth meeting to five thirty P.M. In doing so, we would ask that you do a four P.M. workshop on, uh, our CIP. We like to start with, uh, transportation and community aesthetics. In doing community aesthetics, the reason, the thinking between those two is that we like to get a kickstart on the gateway signage program, and we'd like you to start prioritizing some of those gateway signs, so we can begin budgeting, um, that process. From there, um, we'll, we'll see where we are staff-wise of looking at a workshop on December sixth, um, if needed as well. And then, uh, remind everyone that the January third council meeting is currently canceled, but we will most likely ask for the January meeting, uh, the, uh, to, the, the meeting that we have to be placed at five thirty as well, so we can continue the workshop series. We'd like to spend, um, at least, uh, one workshop on every CI, on every category of the strategic priorities, so that we cover all projects in the CIP. We'd like to do that in the spring, so that we bring a, a budget forward. It's, it's based on your priorities, so we've estimated those costs.
Yeah, it's, uh, January twentieth.
Correct. We'll most likely ask that to be a five thirty meeting, so we can have a four P.M. workshop.
Very good.
Additionally, if you need more workshops with the Wonder Gardens, we'd work with you on those dates as well, to fill that in, if needed.
You just need agreement on that, correct?
Correct.
Opposition to that.
Okay, reports?
Uh, oh, Mayor, I just had one other item. You have before you a card, uh, Councilmember Purdon, me just aware that, um, um, the council member from the Village of Astero.
Uh, his name's Raf Lopez, Rafael Lopez.
Representative, uh, we got, council member.
Yeah, good guy, vet, uh, Marine, uh, former, uh, former Leo from Miami, and he's the man who.
Broward County.
Broward County, sorry. And he also, uh, he runs, uh, he runs Southwest Florida's Honor Flight. So, Honor Flight's really awesome organization, he's head of that, too, so.
Did he have, when did he have the heart?
He had a major heart attack over the weekend.
Well, so, I, I know, we're just sending well wishes to his, him and his family, yes. We have a card for well wishes.
Yeah, he was just at our Rotary Club going over the Honor Flight.
Yep, I just saw him last week, but, I talked to his daughter yesterday. Uh, he's, you know, steady, and they're, they're working. He's a, he is very appreciative of all the well wishes from all over the community, so he knows we're all praying for him.
Okay, reports? Jamie, you have any report? You, you have, the firehouse on, uh, Little Hickory Island looks fabulous, absolutely fabulous now.
Really nice.
The back portion of that property is for sale. From what I understand, they're, they're looking for a buyer for what used to be the restaurant and the marina.
I don't know about the marina, I know the restaurant.
I don't know about the marina, but, um, they're looking to, the, the Fire Department has remodeled that building on the road, which is a different parcel than the back. And I understand they're looking for an owner for the back portion, that it's up for sale or.
Yes.
Taking bids and stuff, and, uh, although there aren't very many people living on that end of the island, uh, when they were there, that was very popular, for, easy to get to, walking distance for a restaurant, if it goes through that way. But, uh, they did a wonderful job, and, and, uh, the Indians straightened up the, the Tiki Hut, and it looks very nice, so.
Yeah, they did a great job, that's done, and they, um, yeah, it's up for sale, um, the restaurant part of it is. And, um, also, and I agree, I wanted to state that I agree with Jesse, that we need to find out from, if it was indeed Botana, the, the reason why he thinks it's important to do so, and that Chief DeWitt does, he stands neutral, just wants more information and studies on, to provide the, um, city answers as to why it's, they all feel it's important to do so. And I also, um, there's a letter that is in everybody's pile that I wanted to discuss. San Carlos Estates Water District has reached out to me, and, uh, they sent this letter. Um, everyone, like I said, has a copy. The district has experienced a rapid growth within the community, and, um, there, it has raised concern of flooding. Um, there's a lot of property out there with cypress, cypress trees and, um, such on it, so they're concerned of, um, the properties and what flooding could happen if it's not taken care of. So, they're asking, um, they're applying for grants to help and aid with the, um, water drainage system, and they're asking for the city, um, to, um, give them a letter of support in the application process for the grants. So, I was asking if we could direct staff to put a letter together, um, in support of, um, the grants that they're filing for. And the, the grants that they're filing for is listed on the letter, too.
My only question, um, is it, are we gonna be supporting them against anybody else who would be applying for similar functions? And, number two, are they gonna be talking to Astero who also touches them? So, like, would it be us and Astero both doing it, or would it be just us?
I don't think Astero touches them, do they?
Uh, from the other end.
From the, over that north side of the edge? Um, that, I don't, I don't think they've reached out to Astero. I can definitely.
And I'm, I'm not saying that's a non-starter if they don't, I'm just saying, if, if, depending on who this is going to, it might be stronger if it was from.
Both.
Both that are touching them, to show that there's agreement. And then, you know, is anybody else, like, specifically ourselves, is there any way that these are funds that we are in any way, shape, or form applying for? Because I don't wanna write a letter for them if this is something that we're gonna be applying to get.
I'm pretty sure, I'm, I, you might know, I don't think that, because they have their, their own entity, so I don't think it's anything, they're just, that we would be applying for.
It, I don't think it would be in, in direct competition, to answer your question, Councilman. Most of our grant asks, and, uh, in the program, I believe, that they've been participating in are home buyout and home elevation, and I think they're looking at more of an environmental restoration and, um, water quality-type projects.
So, if it's not in competition with us, I'm, I'm in favor in assuming, but I, I would like to see if they're gonna talk to Astero, too, because I think that, that makes it better, just because we touch them on both sides.
Yeah, I definitely can find out about that. To my, like I said, they have not informed me if they have done that, so I will.
But I'm not opposed in general to that.
Uh, should we have the legal folks take a look at that, make sure we're good, or can we just agree to do it, or what are we?
I, I think, since you're asking for a letter signed by the mayor, it'd be good to have a motion, so that you've all in agreement, the letter of support would go, and you could add to that a recommendation that they reach out to the Village of Astero for a letter of support as well.
So moved.
So, yes, make a motion, so.
Yes, so moved.
Let me make it clear, we're not on the hook for any of the money, right?
Correct. No, this is their alone application, but they did want a letter of support from the jurisdiction. They, their properties are within the city, they do touch the village of Astero, so they definitely would be encouraged that they reach out to them.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Okay, Jesse, you got?
Nothing from me today.
Okay, how about this Carr?
Um, well.
You've got the floor.
Thank you, sir. First, prayers and support for, um, the folks in Israel. And, um, last Friday, there was a, a reception for Dr. Tamour, whom we met, um, and she happens to be Israeli, and she is incredibly charming, as we know when we met her here at council. And so, it was a lovely evening, and I hope things go better in the Middle East.
Okay, Fred?
I have nothing.
Yes, sir, a TDC meeting was, uh, this past week, and, um, had an opportunity, and I, I think I'd ask council, you can use me for events that are coming up, but, um, I'm seeing more and more of our, uh, fellow cities using that opportunity to, uh, highlight events in their city, so I was able to talk about our twenty-fourth annual, is it, Arlene? Our Halloween event, twenty-fourth annual Halloween, Halloween event?
Not Hal, um, we had a, this Saturday.
That's what I'm, so, I talked about that, but then also, uh, the folks at the Downtown Business Alliance, I was able to bring that up and encourage them to, uh, or give people the opportunity to, uh, join the Downtown Business Alliance folks, and I believe Celebration Brewery is leading that effort, so kudos to them. I think they've got more than a dozen businesses signed up. Maybe, Kyle, you can validate that or verify it. Um, so, please come out to that, and.
And that's actually on Halloween.
That's correct, so it's no competition.
Right.
And finally, uh, the comment about Israel, I was kinda shocked over the weekend. They've called up five hundred and fifty-six thousand reservists, um, that are, have already returned to Israel to fight, and when you say, what does that have to do with Florida? The number of people from Israel who own businesses, visit here, et cetera, we talked about it at the meeting, there's going to be an impact. The longer that war goes on, the more, and the number of folks from Israel and that area who own businesses, travel here and invested, so it's going to affect us. And we don't know how, but, again, our wishes and prayers that, uh, that gets resolved quickly with as minimum loss of life as possible.
And all flights have been suspended.
Chris, you're on deck.
Yeah, I, I caution us all to recognize the fact that antisemitism is on the rise, and, uh, that we should not stay silent about it. And if we see it, to confront it, and to, uh, protect those members of our community that are Jewish in their heritage and in their beliefs, uh, against antisemitism wherever it appears. Second, uh, I encourage, uh, the council to, uh, take a look at the Supreme Court agenda and the cases coming before it. One of the cases that could directly impact us, as well as other cities, is a case called Sheets versus Eldorado County. And what this is, is, is the developers have finally found a case, uh, that they think is strong enough to take before the court, and it deals with the, what's called, referred to as the takings clause of the Fifth Amendment, which basically says that if you're going to take somebody's property, you have to properly compensate them for it. Well, they're using that clause in the Fifth Amendment to challenge land development codes of local governments with respect to.
with respect to impact fees and other monetary problems associated with that development. This is especially impactful when it comes to thinking about affordable housing. So all I'm doing is just saying, keep an eye on that case. I've asked Derek to keep an eye on it, to keep us informed. It's on the docket. I don't, you know, it hasn't been argued yet. I'm not sure when it will be argued, but they say it will be argued before the end of the year. So keep an eye on that.
What state did that originate in?
California.
California.
And there's no meeting of the Resiliency Task Force this month. The meeting's been pushed back to November 15th. So there's nothing new to report on it from the last council meeting when I gave you an update at that point in time. I am, I do remain optimistic that this thing will actually produce some results. So that's my report.
Okay, my turn. I've been contacted with Commissioner Ray Sandelli. To, on Hickory Boulevard, there's a sidewalk that is in need of repair from the storm. And also, they haven't cut the grass on the tree lawn between the sidewalk and the road surface in over a year. And I think that's going to be done PDQ. We've been contacted by Ray's secretary as to exactly what needs to be done there. So that's a part of the recovery from Ian. So, anything else, public comment?
Mayor and Council, I just had one other item. We received notification from Lee County that it is with sorrow that they announced the passing of B. Pat O'Rourke, who was an integral member of the Horizon Council. So we'll get details out to council and we know more information. We'll have a card as well for his family. But when we find out this, how different jurisdictions will be honoring him, we'll let you know.
Okay. Have a comment? I guess we've got to go home for insurance.